Check it. And so they speak into the unborn, the untorn. Your land is your carpet, you're the children of the corn. Cosmic or on earth, our life is still born. I'd rather say she loved and wish you a good morn. Another child is born. Muslims and Hebrews, Comishians and Hindus. Remus, Lom, Remuslers and tissues. So what's the issue? They progress after ignorance where the government elected officials to protect us from his very statement. But instead his state is heartbeat. I've seen you crack and become agents. Smell of money is like the new fragrance. Lady Gaga poisoned, have you swimming in Frank's ocean? This is nonprofit, only clothes coming out my closet. Only clothes coming out my closet. So, it takes five figures to shoplift, five principles to prevent this. Love, truth, peace, oh! Freedom and justice. Take off the shackles and get off the slave ship. It takes five figures to shoplift, five principles to prevent this. Love, truth, peace, oh! Freedom and justice. Take off the shackles and get off the slave ship.
Love, truth, peace, freedom and justice. I self-law am master, trust this. Corn children shoring through concrete greenery. Police see you and not seeing me. Activated my auric field, watch the ripples. Freeze pigs in their tracks like a god of cripple. Can't move, no more violations or abuse. Study what was brought to you by Noble Drew. The order of the day known by few. Under the bus, we were flew by those who knew. Now Moes don't even know what they supposed to. And don't admit that they boy in charge is who screwed the nation. Quoting all chapters of the Quran like fall of man and creation. Suffering from mental castration, historical alterations and birthright amputations.
Five figures to shoplift, five principles to prevent this. Love, truth, peace, oh! Freedom and justice. Take off the shackles and get off the slave ship. It takes five figures to shoplift, five principles to prevent this. Love, truth, peace, oh! Freedom and justice. Take off the shackles and get off the slave ship.
I can put his claim on the throne, huh? Children of the corn, yes. Journey to the kingdom is all. We getting back all we deserve by him born. Born through my son, he the prince, just to think people come in. In the war, now you waking to the vision. The nation rises to occasions, I am pink. What a beautiful sight with the youths and the arts and the science. Songbirds ready to take flight, getting in the books, baby, get your minds right. Thank God defending, never start a fight. Legacy created, claim to be a party. Legend say you made it and change it. They can take the page out the book, huh? The ink out the pen, but can never take the thoughts out your head, huh? They can take the page out the book, the ink out the pen, but can never take the thoughts out your head.
It takes five figures to shoplift, five principles to prevent this. Love, truth, peace, oh! Freedom and justice. Take off the shackles and get off the slave ship. It takes five figures to shoplift, five principles to prevent this. Love, truth, peace, oh! Freedom and justice. Take off the shackles and get off the slave ship.
And I'm gone, meaning I get it started. Youth of the corn, they stuck in this maze party. I'm putting heart in as a part of this mess, but most just wanna party. Look, Cardi and Chris, sorry, I mean to rock for dropping this talk business. You see the kids is getting their heads twisted. We sure incited, with no distance. Who's born fighting, bruh, with no discipline. So listen up, quit, the sand drips is quitting. Some niggas standing in quicksand is sinking. By the time it sinks, eh? Already neck deep, then they deep throw in the burn. Six feet. See, we was brought to products of some wrong moves. For self-knowledge, that's ammo that you can't lose. Throwing bushes, calling bushes, we all choose, but the well wishes are wrong through it.
It takes five figures to shoplift, five principles to prevent this. Love, truth, peace, oh! Freedom and justice. Take off the shackles and get off the slave ship. It takes five figures to shoplift, five principles to prevent this. Love, truth, peace, oh! Freedom and justice. Take off the shackles and get off the slave ship.
Yeah. Fallen. We gonna raise you up though. Yo. You might mumble while rehearsing or under your breath cursing. I mumble when I see pants sagging with a person. You call it a bag for your iPad, I mumble some more. Humble smashing your jaws off concrete jungle floors. Y'all mumble with no teeth after we swing these rap bats, Mike Kill. And Morning Star Operation, kill mumble rap. Red rum for the wax lap, spitting mumble rap crap. Old school Carrie dialogue, scoping knapsack. Mumbler's murmur like mama's parade in blackface. Zombies high off codeine in a packed place. All mumbling in circles running, tail chasing wannabe Masons. All they do is confusing the generations. It's walking like Jason when we chase them. Through their dreams on Elm Street, pop the hatch and deep space them. Morning Star, the solar hell's heat, got the boys pacing. Kill yourself ritual with the guns you waving. Y'all ain't scarfacing, G Rap, he starts to flaming. After shed rack, me shack a bend ago, no angels saving. Just fallen angels, mumble rappers undertaking. Mumble rappers, we just undertaking.
Backing like an dagger, you're about to get smoked out like fiends boiling booger to get coke out. I don't wanna hear you talk, my lyrics are right on cue like blue chow. You say black lives matter, meanwhile, black music takes black lives faster than a white cop with a black gun getting hammered shooting aggers. And nobody figures why you deliver, maybe you take that turn to do niggers and then turn right around and ask he spec from honkies with triggers because you're naggers. I don't think you're racist, man, if you're black, wear his black, he stand on the map. Parlay on that, replace your culture with the color from a crayon pack, stay on that. White people are right, black lives don't matter, and Jesus is white, cuz white people made them up, so the pieces is right. Don't blame Donald Trump, he is damn prop. Hand in ass controlling him, lamb chops, scats in hand. Moslem standoff, play along. Take the order back, Jews in football scream, get the quarterback. Eminem wannabe bully, but he not a code of black, he just rap evil prayers till you're taking long naps like black people's hair. You just sing a lame dagger song and wear your pants so low, you turn the gay naggers on, wake up. This is to the government, you can't the territories natives have none of it. Fuck that shit, slavery hurts. Juju is a nigger cuz slavery worked. Young Ma is a nigger cuz slavery is hers. Young Thug is a nigger, yup, slavery first. Can't understand your slavery words. You can whip me in my ass, a masher. I put the boot inside my mouth, a masher. I beat the hole inside the house, a masher. I prayed to Jesus on my knee, a masher. Look at all the niggas slavery birthed. If I was an American nigger, I'd know I was cursed. I do not know where to begin, niggers are always the worst. Jesus is the devil in the Catholic church. By the sun, God's chosen people don't get burnt, we get learnt. God's chosen people don't get hurt, we get learnt. God's over evil, don't get hurt, we get learned. That slave talk is a myth. Smart people talk and say the whole word like this. Backing like an dagger, you're about to get smoked out like fiends boiling booger to get coke out. I don't wanna hear you talk.
It's justice, art of love, our truth is a line news. Mumble boys die choking on their Thanksgiving goose. Y'all kill Shampi and Guru like Kanai and Fubu. Woke up out the dream like, who you? Good thing I do voodoo. Toward the force of hip hop, turning locks and dying in purple. Come dressed up lean with your tight pants, team of Urkles, no herbals. Your sentence hot box with GMO herbals. Lashes from a switch you never heard of, full wack verses. And your belly top outfits and gay law dress codes. Make me squeeze your neck till your head and eyes explode. Nine eleven mumble Negroes, got them running like Snowden. After towers fell, the dust is falling, angels flowing. No lean with bunnin', y'all niggas trippin'. Voice of Westbrook, left hook, leave your nose like Pippin. Beads in your hair soon will be bubbles and ribbons. Poison mumble and rappers like Bellevue and Bivin. Rap for Garvey and Jewels out the wiggin'.
Backing like an dagger, you're about to get smoked out. Stop backing like an dagger, you're about to get smoked out like fiends boiling booger to get coke out.
When Moes got expelled by Isabella and Ferdi. It was under paper bowls with the Christian clergy. Islam versus infidels, if you let us tell it. High priest of Anu took the knowledge from Kemet. Did everything a master should do for a serf. It was when they saw maps, fought to conquer earth. All Moes not expelled were imprisoned or conversed. Around today unconscious, I guess their plan worked. They worked to set up and plant contraband on me. Started saying I'm a Mo and most abandoned me like two Mariscos, they even. You ever heard of, heard any of his, um, his joints, bruh? You probably have, huh?
Uh, only what he posted, what he posted before. I think that's.
That's what's up.
He got four hours.
I got. You got a couple of, he got a few of them joints.
Yeah, I seen one video he had on YouTube. Give me a few videos he had on YouTube.
Right, right, right. Looks like it's gonna be just us three.
Yeah, they like.
That's, that's cool too.
Yeah.
I didn't send out no reminders.
Oh, did you?
Yeah. Didn't do any reminders, but I'm gonna see if I. I'll re-send the email right now.
Okay. Oh, this is the one I was talking about, Ronnie. You got this one?
Uh. Wait a minute.
Uh, this one. Todd's, uh, Pretty Book, Harvey Day.
Okay. Nah, I don't have.
You don't have that one?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's definitely not one I got yet.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'll get, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get that joint. That's, that's definitely one of the joints I'm gonna put on my list. So the joints that I do have.
Hmm.
Right, this one.
Oh, yeah, I got the Circle Seven, yeah.
This joint.
Oh, yeah, I got that here, yeah. Earth Right. Yeah, I only, I got the, well, I gotta download Oral Stating. Hang up.
Other homies, my joint.
Earth Right, yeah, I got that one. I got the Mashing the Slave.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got the Mashing the Slave, yeah.
So, this joint?
No, I ain't got that one yet.
Yeah, one of my favorite joints I hear, man. Uh. The Council of the Second of the World.
Hmm.
Chapter eight. Is this the one? No, 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 that's not it, that's not the one. Some, uh, Brotherhood of the East. That's not, that's not the, the best joint in there. Let me see that. Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, that's, that is the one that I was thinking about, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah. That joint, this chapter, chapter eight in this one, right?
Oh, yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, put that on my list.
Check that out. And then, of course, you know, Service Seven.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Chapter one.
Rise and Fall of the Night.
Yeah. Cycle, cycle one. Yeah, it's in the Father Man.
Yeah.
Yeah, that joint go win.
Oh, yeah.
I got these joints too.
Nah, nah, nah. No, I ain't got that one yet.
Yeah, that's a good read. Ty Strong.
Yeah, I got that one, yeah. Got that one. I got. Yeah, I got that one too, yeah. No, I don't have that one yet.
Yeah, that's a good joint.
I got that, yeah. It's somewhere in my collection.
Yeah, yeah.
That just pops up. Mashing the Slave, yeah, I got that one, yeah. I recently got that one. Hey, you know. You got Clock at Destiny? I got, it's kinda beat up, no, I had it for years.
Nah, I don't have, yeah, I don't have the book. Yeah, I don't have the, I got the, I got the, I got the digital copy.
Digital copy, okay.
Yeah. I got the digital copy.
Oh, yeah. I ain't got that. No, yeah, no, no. Uh, so many of them.
Right.
I, I got Denial Ancestry, it's part one, I got that one.
Okay. No doubt. Well. Guess we can just go ahead and get started if it's just us three.
Yeah, I guess, but, yeah.
Nope. This gonna be, this, this might end up being the nucleus anyway.
Yeah.
Uh, um. I was talking to sister Ella the other day. About being, uh, about being secretary, so.
Okay.
Yeah. She had, um, she had asked about it. So, and John talked it up about that.
That's cool, yeah.
Yeah. And then there's another sister who I had asked, so. Um. Either both of them, or you doing it, or. Um. Or ones, I know the sister that I asked to do the joint, she, Jaz, uh, Jaz, Jaz have, um. No, schedules.
No.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying, may not be very conducive.
Hmm.
Or. You know. Uh, okay. Alright, so. Uh, let's see, Jess, what's happening, Jess? Peace, welcome. Alright. I guess I'm, I'll start out with reading the, um. The, uh, the letter that should be proclaimed in every meeting. And, uh, matter of fact, let's not even break, break that, cuz that was the intention. Also. Going to North American prayer. Let's see, don't know by heart yet. Let's see, Allah is mine. It's not, it's hard. Where do wise? Right, Allah the Father of the Universe. Yeah. Right, Allah the Father of the Universe, Father of, uh, Father of Love, Truth, Peace, Peace, Freedom and Justice. Allah is my protector, my guide and my salvation by night and by day, who is holy prophet. Do Allah. Islam A'Shayy Amin. Hope everybody's having a great weekend so far. No matter has been, um, copesthetic, you know? Yeah, cool, relax. Um. Yeah, let's see here. So this is. More Science Temple of America, Home Office. Thirty-six zero-three Indiana Avenue. Near the Chicago Republic. January eighteenth, nineteen twenty-nine, Prophet, Founder, and Noble Dua Ali is the founder. To be claimed, to be, to be proclaimed in every meeting. Dear brother, Islam. I'm glad to know I have a few faithful Moes among you. And I desire for them to know the truth and the divine truth. There is a host of jealousy about me and the movement now. By the same people of outside of the nation. They claim it was only a joke and unreal. But now, since they have found out from the government officials and the nations of the earth. That this is the only soul, foundation that all Asiatic, Asiatics must depend upon for their earthly salvation as an American citizen. They are working every scheme that they can to disqualify me. So they themselves may take charge of the situation. I having notified all these things to you long ago in the past. It is through the faithful Moes that contribute, that contribute to the movement and uplifting funds. The ones that pay their divine respect to me and the movement will be, will be remembered. This is why I'm, this is why I'm, I'm calling upon all faithful Moes. To increase their faithfulness to me, your prophet, and your divine Moes movement. I need finance and I need it bad. Never, never before have I needed finance as badly as I do present. And I may shove aside the discord that is facing the nation. It all comes through jealousy because of my fame and nobility. The nations of the world will not recognize the movement without me, the prophet, being the head. It has been proven by my work in which I have performed in the last few months. Because I was at the governor's inauguration to represent the Moes divine and national movement. And I will be at the inauguration of the president, of President Hoover for the same cause, of the brother. Islam. And. So this is the divine warning by the prophet. Warns all Muslim governors ordered to read proclamation at each meeting. I hereby inform all members that they must end all radical agitating speeches while at work in their homes or on the streets. We are for peace and not destruction. Stop flashing your cards at your parents, it causes confusion. Remember your cards is for your salvation. Though you to obey these orders will be of severe consequence. We are love, truth, peace, freedom and justice. And when these principles are violated, justice must, must take, must then take its course. Any member or group of members who had, who hold malicious feelings toward the temple or the prophet. Or violate the divine, or violate the divine covenant of the Moes movement. Will we seek, will we receive their reward from Allah for their unjust deeds? All true Moes will and must obey the law as laid down to them by their prophet. If they love, if they lose confidence in their prophet, they should turn in their card and button. Cease wearing their turban or fairs, turban and fairs. And return to the state where I, the prophet, found you. This is a holy and divine movement founded by the prophet Noble Dua Ali. And if the prophet is not right, the temple is not right. The prophet therefore is sending out the divine plea to all Moes Americans. That they do their part in protecting their prophet and the temple. This is an everlasting movement founded by the prophet through the will of Allah to redeem his people from their sinful ways. Islam. Um, you know what, so sister Ella, I remember we were, uh, having brief discussion one day in, in one of the, um. Uh. Comments on, uh, on one of the pictures. And you were asking about, um. Uh, being a parent and, uh, that whole fiasco as it relates to, um, guardianship, et cetera, right? And let's see. So many books. Alright. I'll get to it real quick. So, I looked up parent. This is, um. American. They got the, uh, the S M O G in the back. Okay. So, parent. A now. A father or mother, a forefather. Ancestor, progenitor. Any organism that produces or generates another. A guardian protector. The source or cause of something. Origin, Middle English, from Old English, uh, from Old French, from Latin. Par, E with a squiggly over the top of it, I think you called that, say, um. No, it's not a hyphen. Forgot what the squiggly was called, NS. From the present. Participle. The par, parire. Pretty sure that's almost how you say that, P A R E R E. To give birth. And then in the appendix, you will see per, number four. P E R. Prepare, it's probably how you say that shit. Um. So, in the appendix. P E R. Alright, so. P E R. Number, the number four, four definition. Or etymological. To mean, to grant a lot. Recip, reciprocally, to get in return. A verbal root belonging to the group of P E R, number one. So, you can go back to number one to see what the definition, etymological beginning is. For P E R. Not even read that part the first time. But I typically do. Based on prepositions and preverbs with the basic meaning going forward through. A wide range of, uh, extended senses such as in front, in or front of, before, early, first, chief. Right, towards, against, near, at, around. Alright. We're going back to number four. Zero grade form. P R A. Um. Okay, that's becoming. And then P A R in Latin, in root from P A R A. In Latin, P A R A. R E, to try to get. And then it makes or forms all parts of the word of, uh, prepare, equip, parade. Pair, hairy. Par, parire. Apparatus. Apparel. Alright, so you get the point, let's see. Alright, and then in parentheses, at the end of four says. at the end of four says, who assigns one's destiny? On parent. You also got parentage here and then parental. Parenterial. So one of the definitions in parent was guardian protector. And I've looked at guardian already. And then we'll grab the, um, the law dictionary. If anyone has a law dictionary, I know I have mine here. Um, look up the word guard and guardian and parent. And see what we got with there. Um, so guard, to protect, actually verb, and then to protect from harm, watch over, defend, to watch over or prevent, escape, violence, or indiscretion, keep in check, to keep watch at a door or gate, to supervise entries and exits, to supply with proper controls and checks, safeguard, to furnish, to escort, to take precautions, secure. Alright, to act as a sentinel, to keep watch over, and that goes into adjective form. Comes from, alright. As a verb, Middle English, garden. From Old French, garder. Uh, gudar, from Germanic. And then W-E-R, number four in the appendix. Alright. And when I looked up W-E-R, wants to perceive, watch out for. O-grade form, W-O-R, suffix forms, W-O-R-O, in Germanic, W-A-R-A-Z. Old English, a weird, a W, weird, A-E, and then R. Uh, watchful, wary. Okay, I got, then it shows, uh, Old English, waryan, W-A-R-I-A-N, to beware, aware. And this is where it kind of threw me off, so that was the word guard, right?
Yeah.
And when it goes into additional Old English words, it has weird, a watching keeper, and then it says ward. Yeah, and then Edward and Stuart. Then it goes into, um, Norman French and Old North French, water, W-A-R-D-E-R, to guard, warden, wardrobe, award, reward. So the one that, that kind of like, uh, just knowing how the word ward ties back into, um, uh, case law, not being a good thing. I'm like, well, okay, damn. So guardian, that's not such a great word. Uh, parent doesn't really, um, do it. And to me, then you have, for the word parent, um, you can actually see in there, pair and then rent, so like a pair that rents.
Yeah.
I got, um, the Blacks Fourth Edition.
Yeah, no doubt.
And I was able to find guardian. It says a guardian is a person lawfully invested with the power and charged with the duty of taking care of the person and managing the property and rights of another person who, for some peculiarity of status or defect of age, understanding, or self-control, is considered incapable of administering his own affairs. And then it gives cases, and then it says one who legally has the care and management of the person or the estate or both of a child during its minority. That's why I asked the question, because if we know, okay, so, check this out. So I also have found parent, right? The lawful mother or father of a person. And then it gives an appeal, some cases, and then it says one who pro- creates or brings forth offspring.
You kind of pulled up just-
Yeah, you pulled it up a little bit.
I said, who's the only one who brings offspring?
Uh, who brings offspring? Only mother. So-
Well, you need, uh, yeah, but live in the spring, right? So who's the parent and who's the minor?
Right, right, right. And hold on, so the word parent in, in, uh, in the Fourth Edition, did it, did it say anything about being like of not sound mind? No?
No. It says the lawful or the mother of a person. And then it says one who procreates, begets, or brings forth offspring. In between there, it references different cases. I ain't gonna read all day.
Let me pull up my-
Yeah, it says like a Bill Gibson. Hold on, let me go back to, it says, because I had screenshotted, but it says the word is distinguishing from ancestors and including only the immediate progenitors of a part of the person while the latter embraces his more remote relatives and the ascending line. The word parents should therefore not ordinarily be construed as to include grandparents, and then it references another case, but the, but by the civil law, grandparents and grandmothers and other ascendants were in certain cases considered parents. And then it goes to say the term literally can apply only to a father or mother related by blood, including the parent of an illegitimate child, and excluding a stepfather or stepmother or one standing in loco parentis.
Mm-hmm.
And then it references some more cases, and says, however, the word is commonly construed as including stepmother. Yeah. But in part, that is one who procreates, begets, or brings forth offspring. Right? So we are the ones that are able to give life, right?
Right.
So if we are able to give life to minorities and minors,
Okay.
ones that are not able to operate unless we give them life, then who's the parent and who's the minor? So, people who have children. Right.
Right. You said, so people who have children do what now?
Right?
Yeah. They're, um-
Breaking up or pausing or something.
Yeah, everything else I said, right?
All the way up until when you got-
Breaking up and pausing the whole time was-
No, you was doing good and it all-
To what my point was. That was to my point. Everything else was clear though, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Uh, but every time I try to say it, it break up, right?
Yeah. I think somebody's looking at me and I don't know, man.
That's crazy.
Trying to mess with the pregnancy, man.
But y'all can hear what I'm saying though right now, right? Am I breaking up right now?
No.
You're good at the moment.
That's crazy.
Yeah.
That is so crazy. So if we think about it like this, right? They introduced a system where you had to have certain conditions in order to qualify. And that system in turn took care of you if you met those certain qualifications, right?
Alright, I understand.
In order for you to meet those certain qualifications from this entity, you have to provide what? What's the main thing that they ask for? Whenever you got to sign up for any type of benefits or anything like that. Whenever, really, whenever you gotta do anything, it's the main thing that they ask for.
They always looking for that.
They gonna ask for a non-digit number, right?
Social Security number.
Exactly. They gonna ask for that social. So when they ask for that social, and you giving it to them, you are considering yourself to be a minor, right?
Yeah.
Because you looking for somebody else to take care of you. But in order for them to be able to have life, they need that social, right?
That's what they get their finance on.
So who is really the one giving life?
Truthfully, you, at the moment that you're deciding to to hand over that information, you're actually giving life to the situation. However, at the moment that you did that, you also gave up your natural right.
Yeah.
Because now you're no longer the parent. You're no longer the guardian, you're no longer-
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, and that's, and that's the whole purpose behind self-governance is the fact that, look, I can do this for me. I can, I can come to you in contract and say, look, if this is what you're saying, that you're gonna so-called compensate me for these number hours doing, doing this many hours in a week, then that's what I should have. There should be nothing else short of that. Nothing short of that. I have a right to contract with you for that.
No, but see, that's the thing is thinking is so much bigger than that. So much than that, right? Because in order for you and on that application, it's gonna have the same requirement, right? It's gonna ask that same thing, right?
Yeah.
But if you look at the back of that, the back of that card, it says, it's a card, right?
Yeah, right.
Okay, so, check this out. What do y'all think a card is?
It's definitely not an identification, so I'm gonna, while you asking that question, I'm gonna look something up.
Yeah, me too. Yeah, my original words over here.
Okay, they say it's the coffee card, but they don't tell us what type of card it is. They just say it's a card, right?
Identification.
But they don't say what type of card it is.
No.
Social Security card. Well, social security.
Okay, while y'all looking that up, I found what I was looking for, so I'm just gonna head. Okay, so I'm reading from law.cornell. This is the Truth and Lending Act under the definitions, right? So the term credit card means any card.
Any card.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, one, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven words of the definition. It says, the term credit card means any card. But it don't stop there. It says plate, coupon book, or other credit device existing for the purpose of obtaining money, property, labor, or services on credit. So if you turn that card back around, it says this card.
Right.
Yeah.
So if they are requiring this thing from us in order for us to obtain anything of money, which we know is not real,
Yeah.
I'm sure we all know that the money's not real. Yeah. But-
Definitely.
Under the truth in lending. So this is the truth they telling us. They telling us the motherfucking truth here.
Right.
Ashley, hold on, let's see.
Can I, can I add on to that? Um, from the Truth and Lending Act, it specifically says that, um, a natural person is actually protected because we're not supposed to have credit, period. So-
No, we're not supposed to have debt. We're not supposed to have debt. Not that we're not supposed to have credit, because credit is the life that we give to these corporations.
Right, correct, correct. And, um, excuse me. So when we go, when we go to like correct our credit score or something, the only person that can actually correct it is us. And they have no authority to say, oh, no, you missed a payment. You, um, we have to keep it at five forty or six, whatever the score is.
But what law says that there's a credit score, that there needs to be a credit score? There's no law that says-
There's no in the constitution either.
Right, exactly.
Who's report, like where y'all get this number from? If y'all reporting on me, where y'all get all this information from if I didn't give it to you?
Right, exactly. Right, so that's-
That sounds like some fraud shit right there. Like y'all still in my identity. Y'all gonna act like me reporting something on me. I didn't give y'all no information.
Exactly, so-
Social Security number.
That Truth and Lending Act, bam, we got them right there.
Yeah, but see, the truth, it's like the whole, the whole title, like the whole section, really, it covers like, that's where it begins. That's where it starts. But the whole section, that's really the closest thing that we ever gonna see, the reparations. As long as people are calling out colors and stuff, that's all the closest thing that we ever gonna see. Because that's how we are able to get our credit back.
Right.
Yeah.
And with the social security, there's like a lot of bank accounts under each and everyone's per-
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, when I saw mine and a couple of family members, I was like, what the heck? But I didn't touch any of it because I don't know, I didn't do my due diligence. I just opened it just to see how much, you know, we were worth or whatever. And each state has, has, um, a bank account under our social security. Each state, each country. It's insane. I'm like, what?
And they got left of corporation signatures on there too. Yeah. It's like, it's like a book.
Yeah.
It's like a book if you type in that social security number.
Yeah, but it's ours, so we just gotta know how to maneuver it.
Okay, well, I get that. Yeah, we are the, we are the creditor. That, that much I'm aware of. There's a, there's a, um, a case that Brother Taj always talks about. It's called the Clearfield Case or Doctrine. If you want to hear about that.
Yeah.
So- So, uh, in good time, look that up, because that actually ties right back into what we just started discussing right here, which was, uh, um, truth in lending and our credit and money, et cetera. In that case, it basically indicated, um, by the fact of them knowing that these notes are actually to the responsibility of what they call government, no one actually ever has had that, we've actually never been paid any money. Except for when, when those notes was backed by, which are, they're all commodities, which are real money.
Yeah.
And, um, but yeah, that, that case right there, it was, is the one that, um, actually basically says that you can literally give them one dollar and say, my debt has been paid. Because it's not, it's not real in the first place.
No, you had, you never had no debt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
They get, you have people out there.
But it also you gotta look at how they represent this so-called debt too, because if they not representing it right, then how is it a debt? You, cause you can't own nothing in a positive amount.
Nope.
Right, correct.
You can't pay it with a debt note either.
Exactly, you can't pay a debt with a debt, and you can't owe nothing, if your bank account is negative, they gonna let you know you owe something, but how come if you get a bill and a mail, don't say that?
Is it, yeah, thank you, alleged bill, that's a, alleged bill.
Exactly.
It's alleged out of bill, because they can't send you a bill, really, they can't see a bill.
Yeah.
They know they ain't in that, it's not true.
It's actually an invoice, it's, uh, it's a receipt.
Even account.
Yeah.
That's what it is, they, they can't really send you a bill.
And there's some medical for that too. Cause if they don't have specific writing on the envelope,
Well.
Then it's a federal offense now.
Yup.
Hmm.
No fraud.
Exactly, that's exactly what it is, mail fraud.
That's what it is.
It was, it's that.
Cause you're using the US Postal Service.
Right. Exactly.
Enter, enter, uh, interest, uh, enter, uh, oh my gosh, I'm gonna say it, um, intra, I love where it asked me in my bed.
Uh, yeah, and also going, um, I know everybody, uh, Ryan, I know he's, uh, James Tropkron letter, he goes into it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, uh, you can't, you can't service a debt with a debt note, with a debt currency system.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, you can't, you can't, the only thing you can pay, only way you can service a debt, gold, silver, commodity, anything worth a value. While people saying they pay, uh, yeah, I say you paid off your debt, I say, what did you give? You give them Federal Reserve notes, you, you still ain't paid the debt off.
Right, exactly.
There ain't no debt in bankruptcy though.
Yeah.
There is no debt in bankruptcy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Bank for, yeah.
Exactly, so they been, they've been bankrupt since what, nineteen thirty-three?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir, for the third time.
Right, fourth time they been bankrupt.
And well, and apparently, um, you might as well say that the most recent one was the, uh, previous bailout, and really, that's what the fuck they doing right now with this whole COVID bullshit.
Oh, yeah, they cover up, distraction.
Yeah.
They, they corporations been done, they gotta keep, keep the people busy, mind somewhere else on this, this so-called virus, this plandemic out here.
Yeah.
Most people don't even know the corporations already failed years ago. It's, it's bankrupt, it's over with.
Right, exactly, exactly. Has, has anyone read the book, um, I think it's, uh, uh, the, the monster of Jekyll Island or, you know, something, uh, Jekyll Island where I think it was, uh, Eisenhower? Who, um.
Yeah. I didn't read about it, but I know about, I didn't read the book, um, but yeah, definitely am informed about what took place.
Yeah, Federal Reserve Act, International Bank. Jekyll Island, yeah, I used to tell people about that, and I don't believe in it, I was like, yeah, okay, eh.
Any about your beliefs though, and that's the wild thing about it. People, when you start, start, uh, digging into this information, they are so caught up on belief and they're not realizing that their belief is tied to what somebody has already forced into their mind as relates to something that they want to, you know? And it's not yours, that, that concept of thought is not even yours. If you're not operating first by natural law to the best of your abilities, and then those natural law has become what you would consider ecclesiastical, because that's so-called God's law, and then God's law became common law. And that's what the fuck we're supposed to be operating on it, but these, these people are evil, man.
They criminals.
Indeed.
Rothschilds, Rockefellers, all them people that's criminals.
Uh.
Straight criminal. They enslaved the people, people don't even know, realize they been enslaved.
You know, you know, and that's, and that's sad, man, man, that is completely sad.
They enjoy their enslavement, that's more. Enjoy their enslavement.
I mean, but the best way to enslave a people is to train them up to think that they not slave, to, to think that their enslavement is a luxury.
Facts, absolute facts.
That's what the, um, General Education Board.
And then when you go about, exactly, that's exactly what I was just about to say. When you go about teaching it in the schools, the way that you wanted to, to be known. So when you, uh, talk about this shit like the Great Depression and all of that shit that happened back then, you could write it however you want it to, so that way, hey, we came to save the day.
Slave you, that's what they do.
Cause that's how they tie you in school.
Yeah, indoctrinate, program your mind.
Right.
At a young age, they get you at a young, oh, you had to do, get you at a young age. In this.
And that's why they had to come up with, um, with things to put trust back into the banks.
Hmm, true.
They had to implement systems, that's why they came up with the banking act, because they wanted to put confidence back into the cup, the public to deal with the banks. And that's why they put this stuff out, like the truth and then the, uh, the whole.
Mm-hmm.
The, the one, what, what did you say, sis?
Broke up again, she going too deep again.
One thing they can say, they can't say that they ain't telling, it's all out though.
Facts, facts, absolute facts.
Gotta do your research, it ain't hidden from you, you don't wanna read it, a lot of people don't wanna read.
It's, that's too much, that's too much like work, that's too much like write, that's too much like responsibility, that's too much effort, accountability, like, yes. Motherfuckers are comfortable with saying, okay, well, just give me a handout and I'm good.
Same with check, and told these people, they gonna, they gonna get taxed on it.
Yeah.
These people, from the get-go, you gonna get taxed.
Right.
They, they ain't, where's the lie? Where's the, they keep telling these, they bluntly telling people now, they ain't, they ain't send no signals or no mystery signal, no, they bluntly telling you getting taxed, what they gonna do to you next.
Right.
They, they. They ain't hiding that stuff no more.
Yeah, um, I know for me, uh, speaking of politics, um, when Obama did his first term, that was the first time that I was, um, um, just involved and paying attention. And I think that was the worst thing that they could have done for them as it relates to their corporation, cause somebody like me, I ended up seeing through the bullshit, well, it didn't happen until somewhere about his mid-second term. But you know, um, uh, for me, that's, that's when I saw what politics was and then what it's not. And it just so happened that during his, during his term, that's when I started walking back into this information. Twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen for me was my wake-up timeframe. But yeah, man, that's.
You telling true, Obama was kind of letting little truths out here and there.
Yeah, but he could be all wrapping in, then it can use how it was later, uh, as well, and, you know, all of those uh, children and whatnot dying, and those are means. Just is unfortunate, but one of the best things he did during his president, presidency was signing the Rights of Indigenous People. And nobody even paid attention to that, they never, never even paid attention to the fact that the man said he was not black.
You know, he said he's king, he's first king American president.
Dang it.
Only he put, he said it in public. And they still call him the first black president, ain't no, ain't, ain't never been no black president up there. Ain't no, but even John Hanson, Bay, he was the first president, he a brother, he a more. People don't even know the history yet.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm. They got, oh, it's a Camilla Harris, they saying she's the first black vice president, and she ain't black, she never said she black.
Oh, no, she didn't say she black now, she done said it, she will scream from a mountaintop that she black, unless she around some Indian people. Then she ain't black no more. But shit, I was. I was like, when she had first started, I said, wow, she gonna come out with some hot sauce out of her purse. And I be damn, she show did. The epitome of a, a person who know, but will play that card so well.
Yup.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, that's the bullshit though.
Yeah.
And now people don't even just like, don't even care, like, how can you blatantly see that shit and then not care? You blatantly see it playing you in your face, and you just don't care.
Mm-mm, don't even care.
A lot of people don't care, I think it's more like they're so indoctrinated, they're so computerized that it's like they cannot see what's in front of them, they cannot see truth. If it's not already in their agenda and their programming, they cannot see it. Like you can literally say the sky is orange and it could be true, and they're like, no, it's green, like, you know, that's already in my head, like, you can't tell me. You know, the same thing with chemtrails and like the clouds, like, no, that's a natural cloud, that, that's natural, I'm like, what? No. No, mm-mm. Yeah, I see it because I was, I was like that.
Yeah.
So I'm like, okay, I, I am between, I, I could step into between, um, realities, into their reality and know how they're thinking, so I can dumb down my words and they would, they will overstand a little bit. Like they're like, uh, I under- I understand, but I don't overstand yet, kind of thing. So, yeah, it's crazy.
That's, yeah, that's, that's what's up, so how, how long for you, um, has it been since you've, um, uh, become, you, you come to start recalibrating your, your state of mind as it relates to, uh, the ancient culture, with, when was your so-called wake-up call?
So, um, I wanna say twenty fourteen, thirteen, I started becoming vegan. Um, by accident, literally by accident, and, um, after I became vegan, I started buying more stuff from the earth, from the farm, because you could be vegan and not eat ve- you know, correctly, you know? Um, when I lost my grandmother, e- everything clicked. Like, oh my gosh, she killed the chicken a certain way and only ate certain eggs, like she will look at it a certain way and, um, and I learned that at five years old, but it never clicked, it never clicked until she passed away and I, I was devastated, and I was like, i- it just came like a I don't know, like a ton of books hitting my head, like, hey, this is all she taught you and you wasn't paying attention, um. And then like the herbs from the earth and the roots and how she taught me how to garden, it just, it, all the medicine from the cabinet, um, you know, like dry herbs and stuff like that, teas and stuff, it just, it all clicked with me. And then little by little, I realized throughout my younger lifetime, okay, hold up, this, you know, school, the school system is messed up, wonder why I quit college, wonder why, you know, cause, um, I was gonna become a radiologist. Um, and I studied history of radiologists and the machines of the radiology, like the x-rays, the casting, all of them doesn't prevent, it actually gets you sick. So it made no sense to me, and I was like, I can't do this, I, that does not like, that does not sit well, and I had to quit, and then even like working with twenty-five different doctors, seeing the way they will give their family members, natural stuff, remedies, but not other people, not other people. And I couldn't sleep well with that, so I had to quit, you know? So it was just like spirit kept on pushing me to different things and I'm here now, learning. It's, it's amazing when I see back like, wow, spirit was literally beating me up, like, don't go that path, but I was ignoring it, and then it would hit me in the face. But it's beautiful, it's a beautiful thing.
I would definitely have to say that I do agree, um, spirit definitely does have a lot to do with.
My bad.
Um, but spirit does have a lot to do with how you're able to really take in this information, because if you're spirit, right? Is that me?
Nah, that's, that's, that's. Yeah, I'll tell you. My apologies, my apologies. We good? Are we, are we good?
Oh, no, I'm afraid to say something.
My bad.
No, you're good, you're good.
You should point my sister, my apologies. You should point my sister, my apologies.
Oh, no, you fine. Um, yeah, I was just saying, like, if you, if your spirit ain't right, you're not gonna take this information, any really information. And be able to. See the use in it, see how you would be able to really implement it into your life, because like me personally, I came into, I guess. What you would call awakening, um, really because of my son. Um, because I had taken him to the doctor and um. This was around the time with the swine flu and they were like, oh, well, we, we don't have the regular flu shot. So we're gonna give him the swine flu shot. And like, deep down in my heart, I knew, I was like, no. Don't, don't give, don't let them put that shit in your baby. And I did. And that's the last shot that he has ever had after, since then, because the very next visit. They started trying to say that my baby was autistic. They literally, the next visit. They wanted to run all these tests and do all of these things and they were saying that this and this and this, 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 this was all the reasons why. And then, so I'm like, well, I know damn well my baby's not autistic, so we could do whatever test you're trying to do and we could. We could let it be known that this is not what it is. And so they tried to end up saying, he's on the real low end of the spectrum, so he may be or he may not be, but. We're gonna classify. I said, no, y'all not gonna do shit. Like, no, y'all is not gonna do nothing. So I was talking to a coworker. And um, you know, she started giving me a lot of information and, you know, giving, like, really breaking stuff down to me. And, you know, I started looking stuff up and running, running with it. I ended up down so many rabbit holes, but you know, honestly, I feel like the, the, they designed it that way. So that way, because they tell the truth. They give you that truth. They have to give that truth. That, right, because that's, that's talakar, but that's how it works. They gonna throw all this other shit for you to get lost into and they gonna sprinkle a little bit to truth in there too. So that way you think like, oh, and you onto something. But really, you just onto something that's leading you down, something that's. Gonna end up, because that's exactly what happened to me, is I ended up looking into this and looking into that and finding out. Cause really, I, from there, I started like really having into the spirits. It's like real happy. And. That's how I ended up coming across um Taj and finding out like, you know. Moors and all of that, like nationality and whatnot, but that's not what I was focused on at the time. So it's like, okay, yeah, that sounds good, like, okay, but this stuff is way more interesting. Because it's relevant to right now. It don't have nothing to do with the eighteen hundreds and fourteen hundreds and sixteen, like, oh, fuck about none of that shit, but. At that time, I was really still in that program mode. You know, like, I was, it was, it was, I was coming out of it, but I wasn't all the way there. But, you know, once. My spirit was right. And I just started asking those right questions. Boy, like, everything started coming back, because I put. Like, really researching now for like a couple of years, I would say maybe about. Two or three years, I wasn't even worried about, like, I wasn't really trying to read nothing or nothing. And then I really got back into. Connecting to my spirit and from there, I swear my ancestors have led me down a path, so it's crazy. It's like, I'm, I'm so thankful for it, but it's just, it's amazing how you're able to. See things. And it's like, I appreciate the fact that where I was then, you know, it's like, I know I've, I've grown so much. Because I come across the same information that I knew back then. It just hits so different.
I get it. I'm in that mind. Been there, done that, and still doing it.
So I'm definitely, I'm appreciative of all the people that I've come across, all the information that I've come across, the. Just the, the knowledge and the connection to actually understanding. Just really not understanding, really interesting, because it, it starts with you. And, and you have to, you have to be right. Like, like I said, if you not right, it's, you might as well just keep on doing what you're doing.
Yeah, yeah. Stay in the cycle, stay in the cycle. I got it. Now I'm a doula, I'm a birth assistant, I'm a student midwife. So when you talk about children and like that cycle with the doctors, it's, oh my gosh. It's funny how you say also, like, um, if you're not right with spirit, it's not gonna connect. The crazy thing is, I couldn't do anything with my birth certificate, my children's birth certificate, the bath support. I knew all the information. I got it to the T. I can help every birthing mother have their own um, um. Live birth certificate. And do all that paperwork and everything, but when it comes to my family, I couldn't do it. And I remember I came across this person and she was like, oh, spirit just doesn't have you ready for you. It's not the right time. So just take it easy on yourself, or you need to step away from everybody, cause you're someone who keeps on helping everybody. And you keep yourself last. So she was like, maybe you just need to cut everybody off and just focus on you. So that's what I've been doing now, you know, doing these classes and. Go hitting the books again and, you know, having more confidence for myself.
I'm there too. You not alone. I said, I'm there too. So I was telling her, she's not alone, because I'm going through the process of where, you know, I'm hitting the books, but. You know, I'm refreshing myself and then adding the next steps, the steps that, you know, I thought I was ready for, but when I was ready to jump, like. Let's stay on the first step. We not going in the pool yet.
It's interesting that y'all are talking about your backgrounds as well, cause really, that's what we, we need as community too. Like, the things that we've experienced in life and those skills that we've uh gained and obtained. We actually should be using them for the betterment of our communities, our family and the nation, but. Problem is, is that we've been put in the mindset to assist the corporation instead of. Your own, your own nation, your own people. And, you know, that's, that's. That's, that's one of the goals of um, of what I wanted to do with this uh. You know, these teachings, these sessions where we're just discussing information and whatnot. And, you know. Uh, doing a nonprofit. Hold on a second, yeah. Oh, man, my apologies. The, young, young ladies, they, I guess they having an argument. It's like, it's like six of them and one of them was, she done had enough, so now she hollering and she crying. But yeah, that's, that's one of the reasons why I wanted to create this, so that we can actually begin to. Um, pull from branches, you know what I'm saying, of, of ourselves and have a centralized way of really doing. Doing things, uh, you know, creating um, opportunities for us and these so-called states. You know, um, so that we can actually operate as a nation, you know? Um, and. You know, we, we're the original people, so we outnumber, we outnumber this corporation in any, any landmass, any state. But the fact of that is, is that what we don't do is we don't, we don't think like we should as it relates to really uh helping one another. You know? Uh, they, they, these corporations, they get enough, because their contractors won't allow them to get what they need as. You know, to do that business that they agreed to, but they're supposed to be providing back to us what's due to us. You know, they, they owe us those, you know, so-called reparations and whatnot, or um. Um, these um tribute and whatnot. You know, that's, that's what these taxes are that they forced us and fooled us into paying. It's tribute. It's supposed to be the opposite way around, you know? So, that's, that's one of the things that, that I eventually wanted to get corrected for me. Uh, is that so-called tax issue, though at the same time, it's not. An immediate, you know. Correction or necessary thing, is the fact of the matter is um. You know, when you think about. Having navigated outside of that, that state of, that state of mind, now you just know better. And now you can operate moving forward from your proper person instead of that. Corporate brand that they slap on your ass that you had no idea about. But that's what I like to do, create a, create a nonprofit. Oh, my bad, go ahead, sis.
Oh, no, I was gonna say. Um, I was gonna say with the, with that corporation. I mean, if you look at who they're under and what that office does. They really, um, you know, we, we are led to believe that they are, you know, the. Uh, enemy, you know, they, this and that, which they are essentially, because you know, they are a corporation operating under fraud. Just like all the other corporations operating under fraud, but looking at who they're under and what they, what they do. And then understanding, you know, what we was talking about earlier as far as the debts and stuff. You just, you, you gotta be aware of who is who in the roles that we play.
Yeah, definitely, I get that, definitely. Well, I guess. That would be a, I guess, decent segment uh. Taking a look at the clock of destiny. Hey, right here on the front page. It's actually telling us that, you know, there's a, there's a concept here that, that we're not aware of. Anyone familiar with the clock of destiny?
Me. Very familiar with it. One and two.
Uh, I personally have not completely studied it, but I have read through it a few times. Um, it's some, it's some great information. Yeah, I mean, we can uh dive into this and. We keep discussing, testing this, this really, this is not, uh, you know. Um, it's just building, you know what I mean?
He goes in very in, in detail, Charles Mosley Bay. Um, clock of destiny one and two. Goes very in detail. About the information, science, zodiac constitution, you know. Sometimes I post it on, on social media sometimes, this stuff, it's like, man, it woke me up a few years ago when I started reading. Big time, he went in, he went into some higher lessons, man.
No, no, right, right. Did, did you wanna, did you wanna? Did you, did you wanna start it off?
Oh, yeah, clock and destiny one, okay.
Sure. I thought somebody might have had a question or something. There's some, one of the sisters was about to say something.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, where can I get this at?
Um, I'll put the, you know, the website in the, in the chat. Let me see here.
Are you reading the red one? The one with the red cover?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Hey, you'll find it on this, this page or you can look, or you can look it up. On this page, and as a matter of fact, I think I emailed it. You, you had the email, um, is that correct? Did you get the email?
I got an email, but I don't know if I got the one with the link with this. Is that? Is it connected with the Zoom link?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
No problem. Um, it should be a part of a, like a Google Drive, if you go back to the email. Is there any from talking? No? Y'all can't hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay.
Can I hear you? Yeah, we can hear you.
Trying to, um. I'm using two devices and John's bugging me out. So I'm uh trying to scroll on this. Hey, Jochen, can y'all hear the um, like the interruption when I start moving the screen?
Put that one on mute, the one that you're talking on on mute. And then would, and turn the volume down on that device. And then the one that you're, the other device that you're on. And then you could turn the volume up.
Can I hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you.
You can still hear me? Okay, hold on.
Yes, so you don't have it on mute.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can hear you, um, yeah.
We hear you.
Okay, yeah. It's back on the other one though, so mute that one. Yeah, that's how you're getting the feedback.
Okay. So.
That one, huh? Oh, you don't know which one is which? So whatever one that you just unmuted is the one that you need to be talking on. That one. Whatever your faces, whatever one your face is closer directed to, it's because that's what is showing that you're talking on right now.
How about now?
There you go.
Is there any feedback?
Yeah, it should be good, cause it's not the feedback. No, no. Yeah, it should be good because it's not the feedback. No, no feedback.
No feedback.
You're gonna have to put, but you can't mute that one? I guess, is that the one that's on the computer?
All right, how about now?
Yeah.
All right.
Any back to this?
All right.
Okay, well, I'm ready whenever you are, bro, Reggie, if you wanted to start it off, man.
Oh, you want me to first page or you want me?
It's up to you. If you if you wanna just pick, if you wanna just pick a pick around like things you might have read through already, highlighted and whatnot. We can do that too, bro.
Oh, yeah, and a clock of destiny, let me. Listen, it means full of a page here. Because I got it with me right now. The destiny one.
No doubt. That's the other reason why I like hard copies myself. You, that's.
Yeah.
That's why I like. That's, now I can do it with the computer. It's just you gotta get all into the joint and.
Yeah.
Uh, be pulling this and pulling that and clicking that to highlight this.
All right, let me see. He goes into here. Uh, so on page ten. That I posted on social media before, um, the land of the Moors, the crest of Asia. Uh, clock of destiny one by Charles Mosley Bay. He goes in and says Peru, Mexico, um, Isabella or Cuba. You you, United States of America, Canada, Alaska, all which compromise the land of the culture Moors. The descendants from the ancient Moby nation, the fathers of civilization, inhabit this hemisphere. Thus, the USA, Alaska and Canada. Lie in the geographical region of the of the crest of Asia, often referred as to the temple of the moon and sun. Now, which scientifically implies to the great inclination of the earth axis to the sun. During the month of June, July, August in the north northern hemisphere. But while our forefathers were before this land of ours, namely a maxim. Was named North Central South America. Go back here. What what are to that today, without a doubt, my prediction, namely more, the name more is derived from the name mobile. And I'm reading from this. I highlighted.
What page is that?
That's on ten, page ten.
And if you got the um, if you got the copy in the email, it's gonna be page. Uh, eight and nine, where he was reading it from. Uh, for that paragraph. And yeah, PDF file. It is in the, is it, it is in email on the PDF.
Could you, um, like, really break down as far as like what? Maybe like, um, summarize, not really summarize them, but just give us some background as far as what the clock of destiny is?
Okay, from my understanding, a pocket destiny, it was a. Carry on from uh, for the his work. And it's it's basically. Well, we don't even have to guess at it. But from what I gathered when I studied it uh for a bit. It's basically a brief on how we. Should conduct ourselves as well as what we should expect from the pale nations as as a relation to their. Uh, connection to uh, the planet and and the alien nations. Excuse me. All right, so I'll go ahead and read the opening. Uh, real quick. Which is the clock of destiny. Knowledge of truth. And mankind's highest attainment, you shall know the truth and the truth will make you free. Our evidence points towards the fact that. Had the truth been taught, there would have been no need for the great statement to be recorded in literature. Especially the Bible. And that's it. That's real. I'm aware of the fact that the category of astrology, Wu Jiagri, and the history of the Moors nation will conflict with nine. Out of ten, out of every ten persons of the United States of America. Especially those often referred to as negroes. Ranging between ranging between twenty and fifty years of age. Owning to Christian education. Therefore, I concede that the category of science mentioned will appeal to the youth of tomorrow. Those who will approach. The ages of eighteen to twenty-one by nineteen fifty-four. The restoration of the civilization relies upon the ability of this group during the seven years. Of global economic and social revolution. The majority of those now ranging between ages twenty to fifty and fifty. Uh, years of age. Have been too deeply instilled with emotional religious doctrines, yes. And that shit is still carrying on right now, and because they were not. Paying attention to that. The emotions, emotions being played with. They pass that shit on, and that's why a lot of our, you know. Younger, younger adults, they're such emotionally stunted, didn't fuck and and will go out in the streets and march and pray. And then turn around and go uh, so-called cast of voting election. For the very motherfuckers that you was talking about, the genie like, and what they was like, and what they was doing to you. Just retarded, man, that that shit blew the fuck out of me. I couldn't understand it. Uh, but my my bad segue there, um, was that, so.
And to start a history.
Okay, bet. Uh, distorted and destroyed distorted history, which has been. Uh, written by prejudice, European American educators during the past ninety-three years. This group emotionally rely upon which they have been taught to believe. Our facts and testimony are not. The foundation of their faith. It's in very, very cases. These people accept without question the beliefs. For those among they born reared and will disbelieve in evidences, excuse me. Of their. Senses rather than rather than to span. With the impractical, impractical emotional religious beliefs. Uh, which have grown in them. Persons who possess the applied knowledge of the science of astrology. Always employs the terms such as science, truth or facts. Rather than the mystic magic, magic terms employed in religious mystery, namely Allah, God, Jehovah, Jesus. And Christ, these five magical religious terms. Bred only false fear, mental confusion, conflicting opinions and secret hatred. As astrologists are aware of the fact that the aforementioned mystic. Magic phrases of emotional fear. Employed in religiosity. Armed with confusion, mental slavery, human hatred, jealousy, discrimination, human caste. Human caste, economic and socioeconomic, human welfare, bloodshed, destruction and starvation. Today's religious uh worship first have proven to the entire world, they had rathers resort to emotion and human hatred. And fight, subdue over the name of the mystical god. And religion then reasonably agree with amplified and applied truth. Facts, science solving their economic and social strife as shown in both signs of the ever-present yet.
Basically talking about go back to your culture, go back to your ancestors. Go back to your own culture, could could following. What you've been doctoring, and you said that's what you got your economic problem is, is is listening. And instilling your brain with you been taught, you know, it's not true. That's why you're suffering.
Right.
To go back to your culture.
Right.
Which is the the zodiac.
They.
Twelve signs of the zodiac.
Is that.
And the five symbols he put it.
They, they, bruh.
Yeah, they put it, he's the one who put it out, like, was a Freemason using our, using our Illuminati, using our symbols. I used to, I used, I know it's um Illuminati, the pyramid, backing it out in the conspiracy house. Man, that's Illuminati sign and found out it was mine. It belonged to me.
Yeah, yeah. That was, that was one of the symbols for me that I was like, well, damn, they they really made sure you was confused on that shit, didn't they?
Right.
I know the evil stuff, I know some, all the devil stuff, man, it's like, but they got, oh, we got, we don't see that on the screen. And find out, they found ladies and. That's my stuff. I'm calling it evil and stuff like.
You know, just.
Right in your face.
All the way down to what you. Right, exactly, even to what you would call hoodoo and voodoo and whatnot, like, that's just our ancient culture. You know?
I was, I was just gonna say that, that's actually what let, I'm sorry. Now, as I said, that's what let me to really look into spirituality because I started asking a question like, why are they keeping us from? All of these like taboo quote-unquote religions and all of these things and and these, you know, traditions and why? What what is the reason that he want us to think that they are so bad?
Mm-hmm.
And when I found out, it it really, it opened up a whole level of my mind.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And that's and that's what's up though. Problem is, is that a lot of us are not open to recognizing that fact and then tackling that truth, like. You already, you can admit to yourself on on some occasions before you. Before you was even aware of what you may know now, you can admit. That, you know. You saw things and witnessed things that didn't make sense.
Mm-hmm.
And you just didn't have, you just, you just didn't have the the terminology. To title it or name it what you were seeing, you know? And. This is 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 crazy, but I'm 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 grateful. Because it's it's likely that had I had I been aware or reminded of this information in my. And say in my twenties, I would have been too immature. To maintain a proper uh focus with the information. I probably would have tried to use it. You know what I'm saying? Like, like these motherfuckers who are now trying to. Use the information and get over on our people, you know what I'm saying? You wanna sell packages and shit like that, like, it's not about that, you know? If you're gonna help, help. You know, and if it's about doing it on a regular basis for your people, then that'll, that'll actually come together, it'll happen. You know, where there is some sort of compensation that can support yourself and support your family and. You can employ other families, type of thing, like, that's nation building, but.
Yeah.
They try to get rich over them, but that's some power shit, and our people keep doing. Keep doing it.
Yeah. A lot of your stuff, man. They keep screwing screwing over our people. We are in a bad enough situation. And it is keep keep getting over and over on, and it feels like. What goes around comes around, that's gonna happen. They know, they know what they doing. They trying to hit a high road, but they can't, people catch on. What they doing.
Exactly, that's that's why that's Crawford wrote caveat into it.
Oh, yeah, he knew he, yeah, he knew it was dirty moors when he was still living. Warn us about.
Right, always, always chasing that fucking so-called money. And that the real bag is your spirit. And the real bag is you waking up to the fact of how they been screwing you over in your your ancestry since. You know what I'm saying? Since you allowed them motherfuckers to to have a state of mind about themselves to be human. You know, be a part of the human race, and now they. They've utilized that shit, that same knowledge and that wisdom against you. And you just accept it, you're like, whatever. I I can't see it, I don't get it, like. Right, you know?
Even the the outfits with the Ku Klux Klan wear. It belonged to us. Yo.
Facts, exactly. Yeah, that's, is that, uh.
Wearing our stuff.
Let's see, I think I got one hundred and one.
I think he's getting out one amazing facts about the negro. He's getting out.
So couple of joints that I had, um, ordered not so long ago.
Oh, yeah.
Uh.
You get that one.
Yeah, that. You know, tablets joint. And this joint. But, yeah, the, um, what you was talking about and the the capital, yeah, hundred and one.
Yeah.
I wonder if I got to it already. I know what's saying here. Let me see if I can find it real quick. Because I think it got a picture with it too.
Yeah, that's a picture. Yes, I think. In Spain, picture of the painting is one.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I think it was walking in it. Man, they got us spooked out by our own stuff.
Our own shit, bro.
Yeah, man, you're. Man, you got a white robe. Oh, my God, I got that. That's your stuff. Ain't nothing spooky about it.
But see, they know to our energy because of our stuff, they know our energy is what charges it, what keeps it going.
Yo.
Yeah.
Especially if it's fear, because fear is a powerful energy.
Yo.
Yeah, that's absolute facts. And. And they also know.
Mm-hmm.
They also know. That, um. That we. That, like you was just saying, just about about our energy and whatnot, you know, we, um. We're 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 a spiritual people. You know. By our our existence, our 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 existence is spiritual. So we gravitate to to those systems so easily. That's how, that's how they've been using that shit against us. You know what I'm saying? It doesn't matter which modality it is you had chosen, you know, whether it's Buddhism to Hinduism or. Some form of Christianity, et cetera. All of those systems come from an original spiritual system. So. You know, I'm saying, they, so they know that it's the science of the of the earth and whatnot, but they'll never tell. You know what I'm saying? Those the 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 their average uh parishioner. You know, that's what it is, because then they they won't have a job in the morning. They might not live after that, too. They they might.
Oh, yeah.
It's funny that you say that, because I've actually been, um, watching a lot of Bill Carson lately in Forbidden Knowledge TV and. He talks about how, um, you know, our, it's actually encoded in our DNA. We have a worship gene. And, you know, they've they scientists have discovered that about two hundred thousand years ago, this gene developed in our DNA. Where, you know, we have a strong sense to worship something.
And it should be self.
Exactly.
Yo.
But because they know that, they disconnect us from self and throw so many different other things at us.
Hmm. Yo.
No shit, great, great point. Empress Ella, she coming, she came prepared today, just dropping in some jewels and whatnot, that's what's up.
I try to drop jewels wherever I go.
This also is a good book too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It was a good book.
I don't think I got that one yet, but I did get.
Hey, gotta get it.
That's, that was the astronomy, right?
Yeah.
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 It was on the secret master keys.
Yeah, okay, no doubt. No doubt. I got, um, I got recently the uh Ancient of Modern Britons, book one and two. I got um. What's the brother's name, Prince Uriel Bay's uh consecrated talisman. Now, I, I, I picked up books from. So many sources and they just, they really just sitting, and I hate the fact that they're sitting, but then. I look forward to the moment where I actually have the time to really. You know what I'm saying, engross myself in them and, 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 you know, just digest that information so that I can. You know, be prepared and prepare our people, but. Man, this is, this, this shit for the week at all, and I said, I think that's the other part is, people are. You know what I'm saying, they're tired, they're beaten, and I get that too, but I'm too tired and I don't wanna see that shit continuously happening. To our people, you know what I'm saying, we should be able. Come together and put things in place where we don't have to worry about fighting all the fuck not. You know? That's what I want.
I definitely agree. I had said I agree, I was agreeing.
Not, not, not you says the br- br- Reggie had put a, put a book up. I don't know what book it was he, saying. Okay. What's, what's, what's that joint about, um, Reg, have you read any of it yet?
I didn't see it, what was it? Psyop, he's on mute.
Yeah, you on mute, fam.
Uh, the psyops, uh, the military psychological operation manual. It says one secret military uh manual used to manipulate the public perception.
Yeah, seen that one, I'll have that one.
Yeah. I, I, I kind of read a little bit about it, but I ain't got too deep into it yet.
Okay. And where'd you, where'd you, where'd you get that from?
Uh, Amazon.
Okay, bet.
So let me ask, is there a difference between the, the CIA one and the military one? Cause I see one says by the US Army and by the, well, I guess I just answer my own question.
They all in on it, they all in it. Yeah, they all.
It'll be good to get both of them.
Yeah, and I'll get, um, that's a good book too, I read into it, uh, um, with the solid weapons for fire wars.
Yeah.
That's a good one, yeah, that's a good, you had that one.
Yeah, yeah, I do have that one.
Yeah, that one, yeah.
That one's mind blowing, actually. So every time someone gets like a heart attack and stuff, I'm like, did you really get a?
So, funny that you say that, because was it three, it was three nations? So-called African nations?
Yeah.
You had, no, okay, no, you had, um, the, the joint that just happened in Cuba, so, um. Was it Cuba, no Haiti. So that, that president, and then you got the, I think it was two African nations. And those presidents, the moment that they were started talking about they not, they not back to that bullshit about the vaccine, et cetera. And every time, I keep posting this, man, I keep posting this.
King Alpha Plan, yeah.
Like, y'all, y'all not, you just don't wanna see, like, it's right there, it's telling you. Are you not, how you not wanna see that?
Yep, that's true.
Like, yeah, this joint, this joint blew my fucking mind, I, I haven't even finished this joint yet, I, I got through like. Like the first, uh, let's see, how far did I get? Yes, I went through it, went through it quite a bit though.
Oh, yeah, there's some, it's, you gotta get your literature, man, you'd be surprised.
Yeah.
They put stuff in your face, they put a lot of stuff in your face.
All the time, oh, hey, you know what? Anybody see the movie, um. Uh, the Nat Turner joint, um, what was it called?
Rats of a Nation.
Birth in the Nation, Birth in the Nation, that's what they did. And do you remember in the beginning? Right at the very beginning, when he's sitting with his ancestor at, around the fire? And the ancestor says something to him in whatever tongue that is, basically saying that he's gonna be. You know, well off and prosper, et cetera, speaking life into him, basically. And the very next scene, they cut to him being on a plantation, and you have the, the Albion. Um, calling him, calling his name to come inside the study, and they go into a library. And right in the library, there was tons of books on the shelf that looked like law books or law literature. Right? Codes and shit. And he's looking at him, and he wanted to touch the joints and everything, he's ready to pull one down, cause she know he. She know he, he got, he got the juice, he know, he, she know he got that brain juice. So young blood ready to, you know what I'm saying, he ready to dive into some, some knowledge. And she pulls, pulls his hand away from the law books. Turns around and hands him the Bible.
No, I didn't see that movie, but.
Check it out. Check it out, I think, I think I even posted a clip of that. That page might have got destroyed after. You know, you know how motherfuckers be trolling and shit, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I wish I had those, I had two pages before the current. The current um main page on Instagram. I would have loved to been able to see my maturation, I can see it on Facebook, but. You know, you gotta go through too much to see that. I can see my maturation on Instagram from. When I first started up until hitting the knowledge, man, I would love to have seen that progression. As far as photo wise on, on Instagram.
Yeah, put a lot of stuff in your face. The King Alpha Plan, it was the movie, the last movie, I think it was the last movie, The Purge. Very mindful, I was reading about the King Alpha Plan.
Yeah.
Did you kill anybody, and it was targeting a certain neighborhoods? With the so-called blacks, Hispanics, you know. Or so-called whites. They was doing a person, the president, yeah, we did this, this round, it's gonna happen all over the country, they gonna do the purge.
Right.
They is gonna do, I was like, and they's going around shooting people. And it's like, come on, I was like, for no, you can get, you get away with it.
Exactly.
It isn't gonna get like, man, it's like, know what, that remind me of the King Alpha Plan I was reading about in the. And he's like, they're gonna do this drill. And you see the nice Templars in the movie, I don't know, you see that was the last part, they was dressed in similar nice Templars. It was coming in, in the hallways, in the churches.
Right, right, right.
Shout out the church.
Exactly.
Shout out the people in the church, I was like, man, that's too much of the King Alpha Plan.
You know, exactly. Think about it, a lot of, a lot of the so-called movies we see. It's a parody to what's, you know what I'm saying, I, I could never anymore read anything or. Watch anything, and it says fiction. And not immediately say, well, in order for it to be a fiction, there first had to exist the truth. So that means you're showing me, there's a lot of truth in what's, what you're showing me here, what I'm reading here. Now it's up to eat a motherfucking break that shit down. And tie it back to the actual facts of real life, so when you think about the zombie apocalypse in it. Though you don't see a motherfucker running around eating somebody's body, and you know what I'm saying? You're saying dead people, you know what I'm saying, tearing, tearing people apart and eating them up and shit, you don't see, but you do see zombies. They, they always got their. Today, they got their, their mask on their face, you know what I'm saying? And I could, exactly, and I can honestly say that I can, I still be that person sometimes. You know what I'm saying, that just zoned out, just, you know, you're on social media or on your, uh. What's the name and whatnot? Alright, sis, just said you about the, um.
Yeah.
Glad to have you.
Yes, so it's, I can meet you just, uh.
What was you talking about, yeah? Yeah, also, also the movie too, um, Robin Hood with Jamie Foxx. You're in the last Robin Hood? He played a more. He helping the Albion, you gotta pay attention to him too. Was it, was the Catholic priest said, eh, he got messing truths like, yeah, uh, yeah, the Catholic church invented hell. Term hell, he, he catch up, he got, he said that in the movie.
Right.
Had the sheriff run the city, but the Catholic, Catholic church was over him, man, it's, it's like. He talking about that.
Nobody paid attention.
You know, he paid attention with, the guy says, yeah, we invented hell. If you looking a law book where hell is, most people don't even know where hell is.
That was one of the first words I looked up in, in the Black Law Dictionary, man, it was the word hell. Yeah, you know, that's, that's ridiculous, man.
He gonna burn a lake of fire and all this stuff, you don't worship Jesus, you know? Condition that you're in, that's what, basically what it is. Oh, yeah.
True indeed.
Yo, man. That was a good one, that's a lot of stuff, man. And also the book too, I just got too, Ronnie.
Unrebutted affidavit stand as truth, okay, no doubt.
Yo.
David Robinson.
Yeah, you know, you send affidavits out.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
These criminals on our land, illegal immigrants, man.
Right. Has one ever seen, let me see here. I don't remember how I ran into this. Piece of information when I did, but I was thankful that I did when I did, cause that's this. Looks like the website is no longer there, but I, if I'm not mistaken, I did the wise thing and I saved it. Now it's just a matter of me finding it. Now I'm pretty sure I saved that. I just don't remember where I saved it now. But that, um, that document, it gave the breakdowns of writ types.
Okay.
And Now, I don't have that no more. Ah, man.
Yeah. Dig it back up somehow.
Yeah, you know, see if I can reclaim that, man. But as you see title here, it says, um, divi- divine writs.
Divine writs?
Yeah. Okay, I see. Damn, he just removed the joint too in April.
Oh, did he? Damn.
Let me just see right here though. The honor of sight waves his right to rec- to be recognized as a person for a person. Law, Autophus Six, and it's the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, Autophus Sixteen, International Covenant of Civil and Political Rights.
Wow.
I know about the Universal Declaration of Rights and Human Rights.
Yeah.
I've never heard about the International Covenant.
Seven point, um, either.
But, yeah, that, that, um, that document had a whole list. I know I saved that motherfucker. I know it. Damn it. But, um, I think we had a a good discussion this evening.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, we definitely did.
What'd you say?
I said I thoroughly enjoyed it.
Okay, that's what's up, no doubt.
Good, that's good.
I'm gonna stop, stop the recording and we can talk, talk some shop.